Glory be to the holy name of God Book of Second Chronicles, Chapter 9, Verse 12 And King Solomon gave to the queen of Sheba all her desire, what she asked, beside that which she had brought unto the king, so she turned and went away to her own land, she and her servants. She gave to the queen of Sheba all her desire, what she asked, beside that which she had brought unto the king, so she turned and went away to her own land, she and her servants. She gave to the queen of Sheba all her desire, what she asked, beside that which she had brought unto the king, so she turned and went away to her own land, she and her servants. And Solomon was the richest person, was torn by the Lord. And his fame and name was spread over the country. And every kingdoms of his set-up was being admired by all the people. And everything was systematic. And the Lord made it as a palace and a good garden in those days. To seek after his wisdom, people came after him. We can see in the scripture, the people run after from two and fro distance to look unto his wisdom. And Sheba the queen is one of them. And she was asking or hearing about the glory of this lemon. How was the palace? Temple was like that. And porch was like that. And servants were like this. And his church was like that. And she heard about many things. Now she came and looked after. And when she looked after, it is more than all his desire. And the setup and the land was more than she was desired and asked. And she have seen so many things in the land of Israel. When looking into everything, and she had desire upon it. And today's message, desire. We all have desires. We are earthly desire and spiritual desire. But today my preaching is the good desire and evil desire. I will keep before you, and it is your part, the honey bee to take it. And you have to suck only the honey. And the Lord said, so you are my mouth, you are taking the good out of evil. All the good and evil were written in the Bible. And the Lord kept a tree in the garden of Eden. And one is identifying the good and evil tree. And you can eat the tree of life fruits. But until the Lord tell to you, you should not eat this fruit that is giving good and evil likewise. There are many things in the Bible concerning divine matters. And you have to pick it in a very beautiful way. And manna will come down in the tessan. Removing all the dust, and you have to take the manna as your food and meat. And to King Solomon, Sheba the queen had all desire, she asked something. And whatsoever she asked according to her desire, it was given to her. In this morning time, what you desire and ask unto God, the Lord bestow unto you in this morning time. Desire as well not wrong, but lust is wrong. And if you look unto some things, and you will have that attracting energy. When you give up for that attracting force, you face defeats and failures. You can look unto a thing, but again if you turn back, and it is wrong, it is sin. I hope that you are watching carefully. Opening your eyes and you watch an evil incident. And when you look unto it immediately, sensor must be in your. You must control your mind by telling praise the Lord. Leaving bus, accessories and vehicles, if you go and dash upon it, and you will have to fall on the road. It is not ring that you are seeing or looking unto it, and you are making your heart to turn towards it, and that is a sin, that starts a sin. So the Bible says, and he have to crucify his lust and desires. We can see this word in Book of Galatians, Chapter 5, Verse 24. And they that are Christ and they have crucified the last of things. Even the holy people are also having lust. Angels are also having desire. And the Bible says, even Jesus had some desire. Everyone is having some desire. To a poor man, and he will have the desire about the richest and blessed thing. One who do not have food, and he have desire upon the food. He who do not have good garments and garments, and he will have a desire about a garments. When we look unto Book of Luke, Chapter 14, Verse 21. And Lazarus is having a desire upon the bread that is falling from the table. And one who was backslidden, and he is a prodigal son. And where he had desire. And when he was taken and removed everything, and he was got to the swine area. When we look unto 15, 16 of Luke. He just mentioned that, and he would feign well a belly with husks that is why he eats. What was his desire in the beginning? And first he had desire to share his position. Second desire? And to experience that position according to his will. When these two things was fulfilled in his life, he became a poor. What happened then? Now he got desire somehow, he have to eat and he have to. Now he could not get rice. Only the thing is that he have to look after the swine. I have told you. And they have conducted a Sunday school program. What the prodigals in there did he go? And he went to the place where the swines were. Now they kept his husk before swine. And now the swine, they were speaking together, we have four legs and two legs putted, and he come there to eat the husk. How would it be? And he had a desire to fill his belly with husks. And now you tell what are the desires you have. Before I start my preaching, if I ask you to tell your desire by closing your eyes, and you keep telling without able to conclude the prayer. Because desires like come like waves. Those who ride in two wheeler, and they used to receive a desire to get the four wheeler with fasting they run. A lady came and testified. Praise the Lord, I prayed for the light blue colour fridge, and the spirit of God gave me this week. My brother came from foreign, and he asked, what do you want? I told him a light colour fridge, and she go with me, and this is a great testimony for them. And if I tell, you can identify the person. And she was the famous pastor's sister. And she was a believer. What was our desire today? According to your status, you may have desire, and some they have even covetousness. And those beggars, and they have. All the beggars, they had a group, and they were doing some discussion. And one day, they got a plate and increased amount of rice. And all the beggars, and they made a porch, and that is another story. And one beggar, he got an increased amount of rice. And he was slept. And he slept and said, so, and if I get a more amount of rice, I will sell it, I will get the money. When I get the money, I become rich man. And will go for a job. Then I will get house. And when I get some facilities, I can make a marriage. After coming to a certain level after marriage. And my family will become big. He got two or three handful of rice extra, and he went to the marriage level. Now he were think about this marriage. And his desire become big. He become a prince over the world and in the marriage nation. Now whom to marry? And he come to marry your princes. After marrying your princes. And she got a child. And she was thinking that to be the child, and she broke the plate that he had. All the rice, and he was spilled down, and he came to this level that we are a beggar. And they used to tell, the covetousness is a great loss. The Bible say, it is not as a covetousness, and it is a lust, and it is a sin. And some, they have a desire to eat meat. The people of Israelites, and they cried and they fight. That's what the Bible say. When we look into Book of Deuteronomy, Chapter 12, Verse 10. And the Lord said, if they had desire to eat meat, and they can consume it. And because of this meat, and the people cried, and made the Lord took into it anger. And people of God may have to overcome the lust. And believers have to overcome this eating. A good believer should not eat in the Sunday morning. And sick and children, we don't accept. And good believer should not eat in the Sunday morning, and the man of God, and the people of God shall not live by bread alone, but every word that proceed out of his mouth. But what the people of Israelites did, and for the meat, and they started to cry and lament. And how we ate in Egypt. For food and for just for meat, and we should not cry and throw our plate. Even it is with salt, without salt, we must consume. What the Lord gives, we must keep praise the Lord. What happened then? And because the people cried for the meat. And because with desire, they shouted. And what the Lord did you know? And Lord did not keep silent. And the Lord did not give the monkey jail. And because six lakhs people were there. And six lakhs of people, and wife and children, and twenty lakhs of people are there, and where he can get this meat for that, what he did. What is it? Cade. 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 And how it was changed. And it came like a wild fruit, and it came as a prize. How much he did, I didn't see. Did it came upon the house of every people? And Pastor Aruldas, after coming to the ministry, he said so, and we came to the ministry after these years, but we could not get even a meat a single thing. And it was very hard to get even a porridge, it is very hard to receive the meat. And he sat in the six o'clock prayer and conferred. I did not get the savour of the meat. After the end of the meeting. After the end of the meeting, and the crane came inside the hall near him. And the Lord even know all of remembrance. And how the people of Israelites were given. And how the savour was. And the Lord brought the quiles for three feet of resistance. For three days of journey. And it filled the whole place. That's what the Bible say. Where are the prayers? It is mentioned that they wrought it out from the sea. And two days of journey, two cubits height upon their face of the earth. See how the Lord was giving. And the biggest beauty is what they did. And the Lord said, so, you are my mouth, you are taking the good out of evil. Until it come from the news, and they keep eating, and they were not leaving it. And a boy got a severe stomach ache. And how he got the sudden stomach pain? What he did, and he got the fifteen go was that got at home and eat without giving to anyone. Even the people of Israelites, what they did, and they were eating until they were getting the last of desire fulfilled, and it comes out of the nostrils, and even the believers and servants have gone or found like this state. And there are many people, those who were not able to fulfill their lust and the bad. And many were stretched and tired because of the answer, the not prayed answer. And what was the desire of the angel? The desire of the angel, I hope that if it's six hundred or eight hundred are here, and every angel for every people. And the greatest desire of them, they have look unto the worship. And the greatest desire, they have to hear the sermon. To whom? What was the desire of the angels of God? We read in First Peter, and the angels of God are having the desire, and such a great habitation is giving to the people of God, and how they worship God, and how they are going to worship, they are going to receive the north sides of design. 1:12 And this is the desire of the angels of God. Come to the presence of God. And how the law proceed out of design. Angels are designed to look unto it. And what are the desires you have? And how is your desire? And how you have grown in spiritual life, and yeah according to that, you will have desires. Don't cry and lament for the desires you have, if you need, the Lord will supply it. That's what the Bible saying. And what does Ecclesiastes, Chapter 6, Verse 9 say? And it is better for the eyes to look unto it more than the desire you have. After this, all men were receiving everything. And what he had uttered at last. And it is very needed to fulfill all the last afterwards, ah. And he had a chance to get out of it. There are two kinds of desire. One is spiritual desire, and another is sinful desire. And first I will tell you the demerits and disadvantages. First you have to understand the evil. It is doesn't matter, the bulb is burnt because of this electricity, and if you touch your hands, it will be burnt. But there may make many goodness, but one evil even may make you destroy your soul. And first is a wrong desire. We have to understand this in a proper way. And what is the wrong intention or desire? When we look into the scripture. Book of Genesis, Chapter 3. 16:6 When the Lord is cursing the woman. And he uttered a word. And thy desire and welcome upon your husband. This is not a blessed word, the Lord uttered while cursing the woman, the Lord said so, and thy desire shall be unto the husband. And we know that one, the wife is following after the husband, it is according to the lust or love of desire, but the Bible say, because of the curse, and this is a curse for them to follow after him. And the husband have the desire, and dressed it well on a single day, and she used to have a wrong doubts that, and why he was doing in such garments, and something somewhere wrong is there. He will not iron the dress, and today he will press it up and he will eat. And she will give other garments, and he will not wear, and still she will be stood up in spirit. And now they given as a jodi card in a sim card, it is a free issue. And one wife, and she without continuously keep calling him. And he asked to bring some sweets and. And he was standing in the store. And he called, and she called while he was standing in the shop. At the family, where the child was crying. And she asked, I told you to get the sweets, and some child is crying, where you are, and what's the problem behind it? And he told, because of you, there was a troublesome, and you switched off the cell phone. And without any wrong, did you switch off the phone? And it was jodi card, and it was free. And there was no money. And your conscience is pure. Why did you switch off the cell phone? And this is not the doubt, and they have the doubt. And you have to change it vice versa according to wife also. And once I asked a brother to go to centrifugal, you bring a car. While there was in the car, I received a phone call. And he replied, I was with pastor, you keep the phone. After crossing four kilometers, and again I receive a call, I said, so, I prove that you are with me. She knows that, and only pastor was there, and she will let doubts will be cleared, and I said, so, I will call her and speak to her. For the women, there are many confusions, and men's spirit enter inside and confuse the hope. Eighty percent, ninety percent. Eighty percentage of women, and ninety percentage of men, were like that, don't going for job. You have to give your life in the hands of the Lord. Why following after husband, and husband following after, why this is not a desire, and this is a curse fall upon them? You have to risk the given the. And he will care your husband. And if the Lord is not warning you, and you going after the cell phone, it's vain. His son is going to college, and if you want to go after him, it is wrong, and you have to surrender in the hands of the Lord. You must practice to lay upon the feet of the Lord, but you should not follow after the desire. And the second wrong intention or desire. And it is the desire of the Pharaoh. Wait, we look into Book of Exodus, Chapter 15, Verse 9. And he said, I will go and pursue the people and kill them, slay them, I will fulfill my desire. And second Samuel 20:20 says that, and destroying is not my desire. Let it far and be far from me, I desire to swallow up or destroy. Your desire must not be a wrong intention or desire. When we look at Psalm 112, verse 10. And we can see the desire of the wicked. And the desire of the wicked will be destroyed. We should not deceive the desire of the wicked. And the Lord will destroy and put it in vain all the desires of him. Is our desire, spiritual desire or according to the worldly are taking up revenge. Now you have to examine and analyze your desire. Is it correct or wrong? According to light of the word of God, you have to take up the balance in your hand. And there is a balance in the hands of the Lord. And the Lord will lift up the balance. And the Lord will balance you and me. If we are short in that and your life will be spoiled. You are weighed in the balance and you were made for shortage and your life was over till now. How was your desire today? When we look on the book of Proverbs, chapter 21, verse 25. What was the desire? And it is the desire of the sluggish. Desire of the sloth will kill him and he is a sluggish. To wake up a child from the bed, it is very hard to wake them up, that is hard in Sunday morning. And we should not show our slothfulness in our spiritual matters. And many are spiritually very sluggish. Many are not going to job. Many do not do the ministry. And many do not be punctual in every matters. Many are found at the state. Presence of the Lord, you come late and who is asking you? Brother Robertson was there. He was a person based there. At 9:15 and he will sharply close the door. Only 15 minutes are gracious period. At 9:15, he will close the door and the gate, you have to stand and worship the Lord. Are we conducting like that? At the same time, if you have to leave by flight and before 3 hours, you go and sit in the pace. Or else, there is no place for you inside. The desire of the sloth will make kill him. Within a second, if you raise up all the spirit of the sluggish and sloth will flee away from you. And they have conducted a competition for the idle man. And who is the greatest among the idle? And one was win over it. And he got a prize. And they announced now. And who will receive it? And is it so and they are calling your name and you got first prize? And he said so, receive. And many are there, they even not able to receive the prize. And 19, 24 of Proverbs. Somberry, turn your hand on the plate. And then turn your hand on the plate. For 18, 20 years and 22 years of young boys and young girls, their parents are feeding them and if you do accordingly and then you will be beaten by others. At the day of marriage. On the day of marriage and during the videos taking clippings and they may feed and other than it, they will not feed after. A slothful man, he is having a sluggish to take up the hands from the plate and his desire will help kill him. And you should not be slothful. And you should not make your children to grow like a sluggish. They can sleep and there is a time for to sleep. To take rest, there is a time to take rest. And there is a time for everything. When the time exceeds and you have to get out of it. And many those who are not able to stand the ministry. Why many children are not able to stand in the ministry? And 4 o'clock you can sleep and you can lie down, you can get up. And boy who again came gone from the ministry from here, I watched, saw him and he was very lean and asked the reason and you had uttered all the prayers 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock and all the prayers. And there was no training at home. And there was no training to boil rice. And there is no sweep the house. And if you're getting married to them, what they will do at there? And in one house, they asked what are the duties, you know, I know make to dosa and yets. And many are given such training and consented. And the three times again you get dosa and yets. It's not like that. And you have to pluck out the sluggish out of your young age. And sometimes the slackness may found in the heart of the people and the rod of I will punish them and it will take it out of it. And you have to care them only for a limit. And after it go beyond that, even honey becomes a substance. And it is the desire of the sloth. And when we look at Hebrews, chapter 13, verse 5, there is a covetous lust of money. Even 1 Timothy, chapter 3, verse 3 says, and you be without love of money. When we look on 2, 6, 10 of 1 Timothy. 1 Timothy, chapter 6, verse 10. Love of money. You need money. And money will help everything. Is it so? But when you get the love of money, your life will be spoiled. And because of this love of money, we are leaving the presence of God. When we go after the love of the money, our time is wasted. What I say, I tell you to go to job. You must work hard, you must earn money for your children. And some whatever they earn, they will spoil and destroy. And some they will give their spendings an amount to your money all to their sisters and brothers. And the Bible is beautifully instructing for everything. And even some after the marriage, then they are not giving to the wife and children and they used to give all their money to their mother and sister and brother. And you should not leave your home then or outside. You have to earn money for your family. When we look on the book of Genesis, chapter 30, verse 13. And Jacob said so to his father-in-law, I have served thee and I have given everything for you and when I can earn for my family. And he asked and have a serve thee and when I can be earned for my family. The Bible says and you have to pay attention towards it. And love of money is root of all evils. And some they lust and they have pierced of it. And because of the love of money and lust of money, you despise the presence of the Lord. And you have to concentrate, I mean you despise the presence of the Lord, receive the money, you should not receive it. And you have to make this 3 hours time for the love. And you have to spend 2 hours of time for the tarring meeting. And you have to make the time, 2 hours of time Bible study for the Lord. And at that time you can earn money, it will stay for you. Or there will not be any chance for the earning to stay with you. And it says so, I have earned money, it was not belong to me. And I was putting hands full love inside it, but it wasn't. And I have designed and earned money, but the Lord is just breathing out it. And because of the lust of money, you should not do wrong things. And you should not receive the. And you should not get any gifts. The one aspect of the love of money is receiving dowry. And receiving the lust of money through this is called as a dowry.
Isaac gave Eliassar a dowry.
When Eliassar was. When Eliassar. When Eliassar went look after to Isaac Adamsil and he was giving money to them and this is the scripture of the Bible. And the Lord is giving a riches of the glory and changing the bride and taking with him. He gave his life and that is a giving a price to us. So according to the Bible, we do not do. If you go after the money, your desire is a wrong desire. When we look on 2, 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 10. And Saint Paul says, and Demas has a lust of the world and he followed after and he was spoilt. And what was the desire? And he had a lust of this present world. In the passions of the world, then there is this present civilization of the world and even the parents and the children are having desire and love upon the world. And Demas is not an ordinary person. And Demas was a believer who was with the present with Saint Paul was wounded and beaten. When the days were passed and there a vision of the cross was diminished in him. And he lost the vision of suffering. And he had the lust of enjoying the pleasures of the world. Having loved this present world and departed from their apostolic fellowship and from form. And do not love the world and the world they think. And all the desire, the lust of the world will be destroyed. When we look on 1 Kings, chapter 11, verse 1 and 2. And Solomon had a desire upon the women. He was a great wise man. But the wisdom does not teach him that having desire upon the women is a wrong or sinful thing. And spiritually, when we see and we have strength upon the law, Lord said and literally when we look into it and we have a weakness upon the male or female. To your own wife, if they ask for rice and you, he used to tell, you go and get it. And have to pay the current bill, you go and pay. But he will go for the neighboring women and she was used to help her getting the rice from the ration shop and getting the, paying the electricity bill. And he is a Solomon. And such a Solomon in the church should not take part in communion. And those who are living a whole life like a Samaritan woman should not take part in communion. You may hide your life sometimes, but you should not lie of hide to unto God. And he had a desire upon the women, so he committed sin, the Bible says. And what does the scripture say? When we look on the book of Nehemiah. 13, 26. The king of Israel had committed sin because of this. And he was beloved of his God. Now the women made him to commit sin. You should not have any wrong relationship. Those who do not get married and you have to keep your chastity and virginity. Those who got marriage and you have, must have the desire, intention in your heart and that you must have the one wife and one husband, only then you can reach Jerusalem. You should not go and seek after the young people and the girls where they are. And young sisters were there when the brothers should not bring the young boys to the home. When young boy was there at home and a girl should not brought, they bring their girlfriends to home. And without any urgency or need and husband should not bring their sisters and why should not bring their sisters and elder sisters and younger sisters? To the widows' house and the affected believers' house and believer should not go and seek after them. Husbandless and the widows and such houses, you should not take visit and people that are going to the foreign countries. And this is the truth mentioned in the Bible. Without any need, if you go and if you're entangled, you should not come and stand before me. And Solomon, he was a beloved of God. And he who received the honor, praise and glory from the Lord. He destroyed and spoiled his life. When we look at the book of Ephesians, chapter 3, 5, verse 3 and 5. And it is mentioned about the covetousness at the island. And you have left the idol many years have passed. When the covetousness comes, it becomes an idol. In book of Ephesians, chapter 5 is fine, we can read it. And he is an idol, a covetous. Whenever you get a lust over the idols and it become an idol for you. That's what the pastor said. And what you desire more and that becomes an idol for you. It may be a car or any kind of vehicle and it may be a husband or wife or any things, if you keep your desire upon it, that becomes an idol.
நான் இப்ப சொன்னது எல்லாமே தவறான ஆசை.
And not all things which I've told is and wrong desires.
தவறான ஆசையினுடைய கடைசி ஆசை, சாவை வாஞ்சிக்கிறது.
And the last desire of the wrong intention and they'll seek after the death.
மர்நத்துக்கு ஆசை.
And having the desire towards death.
யோபு 3 மதிகார 25 அசன.
Book of Job, chapter three, verse twenty. மர்நத்துக்கு ஆசையாய் காத்திருந்தே.
மர்நத்துக்கு ஆசையா, எப்பட்டால் சாகலானு அனைகு ஊய கரங்க விச்வாசிகள் ஜெபிகிறார்.
And the many are longing for the death, people are praying for it.
தங்களுடைய பிரச்சனைகள் தெரிலனு ஒன்னு செத்து போனான் நல்லா இருக்கும்.
When the problems are not solved, they seek after the death.
அப்படிதான்? வெளிப்பட்டதல் நீங்க பார்ங்க, 9 மதிகார 6 அசனம் என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
சாவை வாஞ்சித்தும் அது அவருல் தூரம் போய்க்கொண்டு இருக்கிறான். When we look unto book of Revelation, chapter nine, verse six. அநாக்கில் மனிஷர்கள் சாவை தேடியும் அதைகானாதிர்ப்பார்கள், சாக வேண்டுமென்று ஆசைப்படுவார்கள், சாவோ அவர்களுக்கு விளைக்கி ஓடி போ.
நீக்கு பார்ங்க, அதனாலதா பைபில் சொல்லுகிறது, தர்க்கொலை, அது ஒரு தோல்வீன் அடையாளம், அது உன்னை நரகத்துக்கிழுத்துட்டு போ.
Suicide is a sign for defeat and failure that will take you to hell.
அதனாலதா பைபில் ல் எலியா எண்ண செஞ்சான் தெரிமா?
So Elijah in the Bible, what he did.
அவருக்கு வாள்க்கப் பிடிக்கலை.
His life was not desired to him.
அதே நெற்று தர்க்கொலப் பொன்னேனா அது? நரகத்து பேடுவா?
When he commits sin, he will go to hell.
அதனால டெக்னிகலா ஒரு பிரேர் பண்ணா.
Technically, he offered a prayer.
சொல்லுங்க. என்ன ஜெப்போ? போதுமான்டவரே? என்ன எடுத்துக்கங்க அந்தவரே? நான் இப்ப சாகுறது ரெடியா இருக்கிறான் அந்தவரே? என்ன கொண்டு பிடிக்குங்க அந்தவரே? இப்படி டெயிலி பாதிவர் நம்ம விச்வாசிகள்.
It is enough, take me Lord, I am ready to die and this half of the believers say the same thing.
பிரச்சனை அதிகரிச்சோடனே, இதிலிருந்து ஜைக்கணுங்கற மைண்ட் வராமை எப்படி போனுன்னு இருக்கே? தப்பிப்போறதுக்கு ஒரு வழி மர்நோன்னு நின்னுகிறான்.
When the problems are increased and they do not have the willpower to overcome but they have the way to escape that is suicide.
கத்தர எலியாவ அப்படி அநுமதிக்கலை, அவனை மறுவடியும் ஊழியைச் செய்யவச்சி, அவனை மகிமையில் எடுத்துக்கொண்டான்.
But the Lord did not allow Elijah to do so and the Lord have given him glory and taken of him glory.
அதுமறை உங்கள் கார்க்கா சாவுனு நான் ஆசை இருக்கா?
Are many of you having the desire longing to die?
அப்படி ஜெய்ச்சி ஜெபிச்சிருக்கீங்களா?
Have you prayed like this?
ஒரு புரிஷ தன்னுடைய மனவியை விட்டிட்டு, அதோ விருப்பபட்டு கல்யாணம் கெட்ட மனவியை விட்டிட்டு இன்னொரு பொன்னோடு தொடர்பு வச்சிதா.
And husband who loved and made a marriage with the wife and loved it and made a connection with other girl.
அவங்க சர்விச் கொண்டுட்டான் அந்த சிஸ்டு வீட்டுக்கு போறாங்க.
She came to the service and gone back to home.
அப்போ பஸ்டாப்ல வச்சி அவங்க இன்னொரு தட்டு பேச்சுரா.
And speaking to someone in the best hand.
அந்த சிஸ்டு ஓடியே வெண்டாங்க சின்ன சர்ச்சிகுள்ள.
And she came running after to the church.
பாஸ்டர் இந்த சகோதரி வந்து சூசிட்டு பண்றதுக்கு, இந்த கூட்டம் முடிச்சுட்டு போய் சூசிட்டு பண்றதுக்கு போறாங்க.
And this sister is going to home to commit suicide.
அவங்க வந்து அந்த கிளாஸ், கன்னாடி துகள்களால நூற்கி வச்சிருக்காங்க, சாப்பிடறதுக்கு.
And to eat the pieces of glass and kept in her.
நான் திரிபி கூப்பிட்டு, அந்த பாட்ல வாங்கிப்போட்டு, அவங்களுக்கு ஜெபிச்சி அணுப்பன.
I called her, prayed for her throwing out the bottles.
இன்னொரு நாளு ஒரு வீட்டுக்கு போறான்.
I give event to other house.
அவங்க புரிஷனும் இதே ஸ்கேல் தான் இருக்கா.
And they have the same stage.
அப்போ நான் வீட்டுக்கு போய் கதவத் தட்டற.
I knocked the door.
அந்த சிஸ்டுக்கு தனியாதா இருக்காங்க, நான் போய்த் கதவத் தட்டற, அவங்க தெரந்துட்டாங்க, பட் தெரந்தா மோகம் இல்லா அப்படி விகாரமா பேசாமு ஒருவர் திரபை உக்காந்திச்சி.
She was alone and his face was different and she sat in the corner.
நான் தென் என்ன என்னக்கு உங்க மோகம் இப்படிருக்கு என்ன பிரச்சனை என்கிற?
I asked why your visage is like that, what's the problem?
ஒன்னுமில்ல, ஒன்னுமில்லனு ஒரு காமணரா சமாலிச்சது.
For fifteen minutes and she was just adjusting.
நான் திரிபி கட்டை, என்ன பிரச்சனைன்சொல்லுங்க?
I asked what was the problem?
ஏய், ஏய், திரும்புடா, கொரங்குச் சேட்டப் போட்டான். என்ன நடந்தது?
What happened then?
நாம் போய் கதவத் தட்டற நேர்தலதா இது போட்டுருக்கிற தூக்குபோட்ட கைர ஆருந்து இது கீல உள்ளிருக்கு.
While I'm knocking the door and the rope she was had made to commit suicide, it was fallen down.
கதவத் நான் தட்டிட்டான் என்னைப் பாத்துட்டு உடனே கைருகிரல் எடுத்துட்டு பின்னால வச்சி, அப்படி இது தரையில பீக்கப்புன் உக்காந்திச்சி.
And looking unto me, removed all the ropes and was sat on the corner and the floor.
இது விச்வாசிகளுடைய அளகால.
This is not the beauty of the believer.
என்ன வந்தாலும் இயேசுவின் நாமத்தில் நின்னு ஜைக்கணும்.
Whatever comes in the name of Jesus, you must stand and conquer.
நீ மறிச்சதுனால அந்த பிரச்சனைல் நீ தோத்துப் போற, நீயும் தோத்துப் போற, உன் ஆத்தமாவை அளிச்சிருற, உன்னைக்காக ரத்தம் சிந்திந்தது வீணாய்ப்பு போய்விடுகிறது.
But there are some of the good desires.
You need to practice.
You must practice these desires.
You need to practice.
There are spiritual desires.
This slows down, it increases. In balance and one side is coming down. When the worldly desires are increasing in you, the spiritual desires are decreasing.
When the spiritual desires are increasing and the worldly desires will slow down. When we look on the book of Proverbs, chapter eleven, verse twenty-three.
Needimangaludhe asay nannmaye. Needimangaludhe asay nannmaye.
And righteous desire is to do good.
You are washed by the blood of Jesus and you are a just. Those who confess sin and he is a righteous man.
And those who are called and they are turned into righteous.
By faith, by grace, by the blood of Jesus, we are changed as a righteous man.
So your blessing must be a goodness. And there should not be any evil desires. All your desires must seek after only the good things. When we look on the book of Proverbs, chapter nineteen, verse twenty-two. The desire of a man is this kindness. The righteous man's desire is to do good thing. When you desire to do a good thing and you receive a kindness. According to what might, you must do good things. And once there was a guru and a saint was bathing. And they were taking bath in water. And there comes a scorpion and it was coming to, that is going to die. And saint got away from it. And what the gurus did. It is going to die, so he take up his hands and left it out. And immediately, it is sting after him. And the poison entered him. And again, he was tolerating and started to take bath again. And the scorpion which was left out. Again, it came up and fall upon the same water. And it was troubling and it was came back. And the saint was looking at him, what he is going to do further. Again, he had taken his hands and left it out. And once again, it bites him. Already you got bit because of it. And once again, you made it to left it out and again. And once again, it came back and again, you made it to left it out and got the beat again. And the guru replied. Its habit is its birth from onwards and when it touches, it will bite us. Even if it bites and we have to preserve its life, that is our status. How would it be? What we will do? And without taking bath, you will leave of the place. And like a disciple, you will come after. And its understanding is like that, but your understanding was. The righteous desire is to doing good. What is the second desire? And what are the desires should be for the people of God? Thirteen seven of Acts of the Apostles. And what's Acts thirteen seven say? Here a man is having a desire, what is the desire? He who called for bandabas and bhasol and desired to hear the word of God. You must have the desire to hear the word of God. And you had the desire to watch cinemas for three hours. And you have to decide to watch in CD for one and a half hours. Wherever you go around, you will close the door, you will watch that now, no one should disturb you. Is it so? And how long you have the desire to hear the word of God? And how many have the desires and have to hear the word of God? When you read it Bible. When we look on two Acts, chapter seventeen, verse eleven. And the people of the city, they have a desire to hear the word of God. You must hear the word of God, your character will be changed. If you must have the understanding discretion, the word is needed. And that prince and noble person, he was so ready to hear the word of God. It's our desire to hear the word of God. When you see the next lead. Book of Philippians, chapter three, verse twelve. But if I know after that, I may apprehend for what the apprehended of Christ. Why the Lord separated out everyone of this world? There is a purpose for the Lord to come, bring us here. It may be for uttering prophecy. It may be for Zion. Or it for me for the gospel of evangelism. To change you as a king. To make you a witness for the holiness. To make you the heroes of faith. With some intention, the Lord have caught you. And why the Lord have caught you for that, you must decide to apprehend. And you are traversing the path why the Lord brought you out of Egypt. Saint Paul said that I have gone after it was finished, I will not see. But I have a desire. That I have apprehended what the Lord have apprehended for me. Why the Lord brought you in this church? You must identify it properly and catch it. So the Paul says, I have desired to follow after it. When we look on the Job, chapter twenty-nine, verse twenty-three. And there was a desire, there is a desire of latering. A believer must always decide to receive their latter anointing. And then one of Zachariah, what does it say? And you just plead for the latter rain. And the Lord will send the rain for it. And he said so, I am desired like a latter rain. And the latter rain is the anointing which is preparing for you, the coming of the Lord. It will take you to the perfection. You must always have the desire upon the latter rain. This anointing is not sufficient. And give me more anointing. And give me the fullness of anointing. I must attain the perfection. You must have the desire always. You should never get satisfaction in the anointing. Are you getting satisfaction to breathe? Will be satisfied with breathing? And will you stop breathing for two minutes after two minutes of your breath? Many, 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 many. And what is the desire? And the old age people used to say, and why should either you can't die? And they were waiting for the lifelong days. What is our desire? Your desire must be, you must seek after, you plead for the latter rain. When you come to the service. You must come to the desire to look after Jesus and not to look after the sister, pastor or brother. Psalms sixty-three, verse two. And Psalm say, I desire to look unto you. And in the sanctuary, I desire to see you. When I came, I saw your glory and power in this worship time. And that is looking unto God. I must see your glory. I must see your power. I'll come to the meeting, I must see you moving. I must hear the voice of the Lord. I need your vision today. And I want to see the Lord who was making a watch on the feet, I have looked unto the him. Only with the desire, you must keep your feet upon the presence of God. And there was a desire for Jesus in the beginning, I said. What is the desire of Jesus? Twenty-two fifteen of Luke. And his greatest desire. And Jesus had a great desire to take part in communion. So you have to understand why we are giving more importance for taking communion. In communion, Jesus said so, I was so desired to take part in this Passover. So we are not giving often communion in our church and we are giving a weight and importance to it. A sanctification for it. And her holiness is. And there is a reconciliation. And there is a consecration. With divine desire, you must take because Jesus is with you. At the communion service, Jesus said so one thing. After this, Jesus said so, after I come in glory, I will take on the Passover. Who waited for the Passover? Maham varama, mahavarama, appama, chappadamattanga. Adheemari, manavati varama, yar chappadurala. Pasigandavasana. Pardinara vasana. Pardinittam vasana. Till the bride comes, I must wait and the kingdom of God shall not come, I cannot take part in this communion. So you must understand how long the Lord is giving importance for the take communion. In other places, it is so very clear, I don't want to read it now. Until I come there, you must wait there. And such a communion is there, so the Lord has desired to take over Passover. And last desire of Paul. One twenty-three of Philippians. And what is the last desire of Saint Paul? And I want to go away from the soul and be with Christ. And this is their spiritual desire. And the righteous desire is to do good thing. And they were here, desire to hear the word of God. And why I was apprehended, I want to apprehend with Jesus. And I will decide to receive the Passover. And we must decide for the latter rain. And we must come to the meeting, because Jesus. Above all, we must have a desire to depart from this body and for this world to be with Christ. Let us all close our eyes. Let us all stand on knees. Whatever the queen Shaba was asked unto Solomon, her desire to give everything to her and same way, whatever the spiritual matters you ask unto God, the Lord has desired to give to you. And how the aspect of the God's desires are. And it is worldly or it is a spiritual thing. Is your desire belong to the flesh and the body, blend, belong divinely. Your desire must change to divinely. For few minutes, let us all stand on knees. Let us all be filled by the desires of heaven. For Queen Shaba, whatever she asked is given to her and she attained the kingdom. If we need to go to our kingdom, we must receive all the spiritual desires. Whatever she asked with desire, she received. What is your desire? I must hear your word of God. I must keep praising you. My eyes must watch unto you. I must always be with you. How many are having this desire? Those who desire like this, lift up your right hand. I want to see you always, Lord. I want to hear your voice always. I must keep praising you. I want to stay with you always. Alleluia. Amen, 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 amen. Alleluia. 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 Amen, 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 amen. Reisalat, reisalat, reisalat. Alleluia, alleluia. Amen, amen. Parisuttar, parisuttar, enathudar. Oyamal thudipadike tirubu. Kirubai, kirubai, enathuyo. Nantiyasalvadi, kitkasi. Parisuttar, parisuttar, enathudar. Oyamal thudipadike tirubu. Kirubai, kirubai, enathuyo. Nantiyasalvadi, kitkasi. For a man's own desire. And the desire of a man. I must decide to hear the voice of saying holy, holy. All the saints of God will be gathered. And they will not say holy, holy and they will. I decide to hear this voice. Alleluia. 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 Oh man. Have you separated and watched what your desires are? What is the good desire? What are the evil desires? And he is very ready to fulfill all your good desires. Till they maybe you follow after the desires of the world, but you have to forsake now. Hereafter, your desire must upon the word of God. Upon the latter rain anointing. To be held, go alone. I want to be with Jesus. In the middle, your sin they all, they will be my. Yehesuvin mugam endr, kandukundaduve. Yehesuvin mugam endr, kandukundaduve. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Yehesuvin mugam endr, kandukundaduve. Yehesuvin mugam endr, kandukundaduve. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Yehesuvin mugam endr, kandukundaduve. Yehesuvin mugam endr, kandukundaduve. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Asayadhey alla, veeranakilai. Alleluia, alleluia. In the asayinall, in the vanjainall, ennulandhiriyangal, sorundubohurvenre, manavati chonnaga. And the bride says, because of this desire and longing, my rights and hearts are befeint. I long, I long to see Jesus every day. There are no more desires for me. I will celebrate a looking unto the face of the Lord, there are no other desire than that. Those who say, lift up your hands. I want to see the face of Jesus. And one who died for me, I want to see him. And one who was beaten up for me, I want to see him. And I want to see him though, he given everything for me. Katheri Samothuka, istodramanuva? Namaha seppattadhe namakku kodukke devan vallavara ikkurabidi naal istodramanuva? Naalamana deena pathikulla katharuduvise emidiya istodramanuva? Namadri ellaa asegalukku melage, namavare kana vinduvinra asayithirke, aver sikharamai varabohurabidi naal istodramanuva? Anden aalukandri ellariyidagri budhumidiya istodramanuva? Pidaakumaranbarushutaviyanavare kaistodramanuva? Ella magimi avare keseleti istodramanuva? Neekimangaludhe asay nannmaye. 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 Alleluia. And the Adibadi, kathavae, devasana kekka asayarindhaan, andhavare. Kethavae, andhustothara, naalgalguada, edarkaga prikapattamada, pritthukulamidi. Alleluia. Andhavare, in the pinmarikala thakaasayarindhadhuvala, naalgalasayakana padavudeshi, umayvaka, devaalaithalumay parkumidiya, andhavasa, asayengalakatharumidiyagavendikorangathavae, neesisharulode, kathavae, paskavai, posikkumidiya, asayarindharandhula, andhavasulajivithengalakuntara, andhavare, naalgalavatikumelaga, kathavae, umodu vada, kathavae, andhavare, devanrachitthilethpoamanunkarana, andhavantiyoda, thagathodu, edarkaga prikapattananduputhathakumidiya, asayathodandhu, andhamelanganakarthath, parlarachitthath, naalgaluvavunusodhathukla, engalakuvavunathaldiyagavendikorangathavae, kathadiyavaniyandhakaralekettadhuvala, engadhiyase, paralavu, engadhiyase, nithiyam, engadhiyase, umadhumugathakana, engadhiyase, nithithulumodu vada, engadhiyase, adhirkadengalathaldiyagavendikorong, engadhiyavathamasadi, muttumaikathathorong, andhavare, kettavatham, jivithu, naalgalvarukavendikulavathu, viddavendikalavathu, asayilla, engadhiyeshumaathram, pachikthavudeshi, andhavare, devasamuthalandhela, asuruyavu, periyavu, katharsiyolandhela, asuradi, navarukuthangal, villingalampurupadu, thodandhamadasamukkoodakkattu, eswamathalavendikorong, pidavu. Amen. Halleyluia. Halleyluia. Halleyluia.